Okay, the meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission, July 10, 2013, will come to order. Madam Secretary, please note that Mr. Maury Bishop is absent and all other commissioners are present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is introduction of staff. We'll start off with Ms. Secretary.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Lindsay Amanda, Legal Counsel for the Planning Commission.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Tim Ward, Engineering.
Thank you. For Chairman's comments, just a procedural thing. Last month, in addition to the planning meeting and the zoning meeting, there was a joint meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commissions, which are two different bodies but the same people. Because of that, there are minutes that, according to what I've been told, have to be approved by both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission. So you're going to see that come up twice, but that's the way we have to deal with this. So when it comes up, we will be approving those minutes twice tonight. So item number six is the approval or denial of the minutes of the June 12, 2003 Planning Commission meeting. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I move for approval.
Motion to approve.
Approved by a motion by Mr. Calendar, second by Mr. Chivisi. Any objection? Minutes stand approved. And item number seven is approval or denial of the minutes of the June 12, 2013 Joint Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Motion.
Mr. Nizo moves.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chivisi. Any objection? Those minutes also stand approved. Item number eight is a consent agenda item. It concerns an affidavit of mortgage declaration. It is just a, an item that we have to go on the record as saying that we have accepted that. Do we need a motion on that? Okay, well, we do have, have to have a motion then to enter it into the record. Mr. Burgess moves.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calendar. Any objection? Okay, the consent agenda stands approved. Item nine, we have several family partitions. Nine A is a Delane Martinez property, lots four E1, five A and five B. Earls and Associates is a petitioner. Identify yourself, please.
James Faughey, representing Earls and Associates on the following family partition. Comments were made, addressed, corrected on the plat, asking the commission for approval.
And we can note that the staff has recommended approval. Any question of commissioners? Okay, this requires a public hearing, so at this time, we will, Mr. Calendar?
Question for the staff. I noticed we suggested recommended approval. Why didn't we ask for, what is it, a pre-dial? We're looking it up. And looking up for the pre-dial, it states that it's an existing, well, this is an existing. So why didn't we ask for?
All of the property owners-
Are signing.
-are signing the plat.
Say it again?
All of the property owners are signing the plat.
Okay.
So it's one or the other. We don't require both because it's redundant.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for commissioners? Okay, we will now open the public hearing. Do we have any cards on this one?
No.
Okay, then we can close the public hearing. Any other discussion, questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nizo moves that we recommend approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calendar. Any objections? Okay, that motion stands approved, and we'll recommend that to the council for approval.
Thank you.
Next is Paula Vize, property, lots two B1, two B2. Again, that's Earls and Associates.
James Faughey, again, representing Earls and Associates on the following family partition. Comments were made, addressed, corrected on the plat, asking the commission for approval.
Again, we will note that the staff has recommended approval. Any questions, comments from commissioners? Okay, we will open up a public hearing. Do we have a card on this one? Okay. Okay, let's then close the public hearing. No other questions or comments, entertain a motion.
I recommend approval.
Mr. Chivisi recommends that we approve.
Second.
A second by Mr. Ori. Any objections? That motion stands approved. We'll recommend that partition.
Thank you.
Nine C was deleted from the agenda by the applicant, so we'll go to nine D. Elman James Partition, that's lots three A, three B, three C. Petitioner is McLean and Associates.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates, representing this family partition. Comments were made, they were addressed, and we're asking for your approval.
Okay. I'll note that the staff has recommended approval. Any questions, comments of commissioners? Okay, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Stacy, do we have any cards on this one? Okay, then we will close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Burgess moves approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calendar. Any objection?
No.
That motion stands approved.
Thank you.
Item nine E is the Guy J. Tomplay Estates, lots Y1 through Y5, Quintmaw surveyors.
Good evening. Clint Quintmaw, WJ Quintmaw surveyors, asking for the approval of the Guy Tomplay Estate family partition. There was two comments. And we'll go ahead and address that. One is a signature on the plat and another is a setback, I believe. Or maybe, well, maybe I read that wrong.
This one is contingent upon a variance is what the comments we have here by the Board of Adjustments.
Okay. Maybe I have that wrong then. Yes, we're asking for the, we're going to ask for a variance from the variance board for the mobile home on Y1, contingent upon approval here.
Okay. And when would you ask for that?
We have that meeting set up on the 23rd of this month.
Okay. So if we approve, then that would be contingent upon you getting that variance. Okay? Any other staff comments on this one?
He's requesting a T-turnaround variance from you guys. I mean, we typically recommend that they actually provide the T-turnaround, so it's up to you guys if you guys want to approve the variance.
Yeah. And why are you asking for the T-turnaround variance on that?
Well, if we look at the size of the lots, two and a half acres and three and a half acres, if it's just a point of putting it on there, if they ever extend to obviously subdivide Y3 and Y2, then you'll have two T-turnarounds, which obviously doesn't make sense. And so if you're not going to build it, why put it? And so with the possible division in the future of a two and a half and a three and a half that's actually connected across the servitude there, we're asking for the variance for that very reason.
Okay. Any questions of commissioners?
What's the, what are you going to put in lieu of a T-turnaround? Just dead-end it?
Well, at this time, to further subdivide in the future, we'll just go into private driveways on those particular lots.
We will open up for a public hearing now. Have you all filled out a card? If you'd like to comment, if you'd come on up and fill out a speaking card, we'd, we'll allow you to speak. So at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Just for the record, we'll need your name on that card.
Yes, sir. You want to sign the card right now?
Okay.
Second. I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Okay, would you identify yourself, please?
Yes, sir. I am Buford J. Luke. I'm the oldest son of Melvin and Verly Luke. My mom and dad acquired the property of about 10 acres from Mr. Guy Tomplay about 30, 30-something years ago. And my sister Jill and her husband David Beck purchased some of that property, which borders the western side of the proposed family partition. In 2009, around September, my mom and dad donated the remaining part of this property to us four children with a grant of use of RUT. And I am a power of attorney, and I pay the bills and act as a representative for my brothers and sisters, sister. I don't actually oppose the family partition, but we do have some questions if it could be answered now or later. First of all, we'd like to know how this would affect any drainage, sewage, or assessment values, any restrictions on us as the adjacent property owners, such as zoning of the drainage canal that's at the end of all the properties. How would that be affected? And my sister Jill Beck, who is here, would like to know if it would be a possibility of having a privacy fence along her property. And that's all I have that we request, and we thank you very much for giving us this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Luke.
Okay.
Are there some of those questions that could be answered, Mr. Quintmaw or the staff?
Sure. I don't know of any existing drainage, and it certainly was, I'm assuming, reviewed by the planning department, and they didn't come up with any, you know, drainage concerns. You know, there's an existing 15-foot drainage servitude on the rear, which would be on the south side of the larger tracks. So that would, I would assume, handle that issue.
And this partition would have no effect on that, then?
No.
Okay.
Matter of fact, it's existing when Track X was taken out. It was established. There's already, you know, several fences along the, there's actually a fence along there. That's a heavily wooded track, certainly in the back. If anybody's visited the site, it took quite a bit of surveying to cut into the woods there. So as far as, you know, requiring a privacy fence, not to my knowledge that that's ever been required by anyone other than a major developer. That's about all I've got.
Okay. And this property is zoned what?
Oryum.
It's residential?
Oryum, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Could I ask one more question?
Sure, come on up.
My sister wanted to know if there's development with raising the land or anything affected drainage of the adjacent properties. Also, I have a question about the private servitude. We, approximately three and a half years ago, we tried to get a family partition, and we have a private driveway that extends the whole length of the property. And we were told that if we had any family partition, that the servitude would have to be wider than 30 feet. Because at that time, the, if it's going to be a residential subdivision, it should be wider. Is that still in effect? I know that y'all have made some new regulations or revised regulations a couple of years ago, so I'd like to know if that changes anything.
Maybe Lance or Ricky, if y'all can answer that, the requirement for servitude on a family partition?
Thank you.
We changed that within the last six months to all private servitudes being 30 feet wide.
Okay.
But I mean, if it's going to be a residential subdivision.
It's a family partition, so it's, well, it's-
Right. Maybe you hadn't seen the map. We could show them.
Okay.
You hadn't seen a copy of the map, maybe.
It ends up taking that one lot and dividing it into, I think, four or five parcels. One, yeah, five different parcels. Okay.
If you want to answer the-
Yeah. As far as, is raising the level, you have, what's-
I mean, you're just raising a regular house pad according to the standards required by FEMA-
Right.
-under the federal insurance rate map, so it's affecting drainage, certainly not on these size lots.
Right. And this would be the same, again, whether there was a family partition or not, the same requirements would apply?
Correct.
Okay, do we have any other cards on this? Okay. Well, at this point, then, I will, I will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Do I hear a motion on this matter?
Move for approval.
Mr. Calendar moves for approval.
Contingent on the-
Do we have to make a motion on the request for the T-turnaround first?
I think that's granted.
Do we grant all that?
Staff comments?
I think that comes under the recommendation of staff. So the motion would include the variance and the contingency on the Board of Adjustments. So that's your motion, Mr. Calendar?
That is correct.
Okay, second, Mr. Burgess. Any questions, comments? Any, any opposition? That motion then is approved. Next, we will have Mary Lobel, this is the nine F, Mary Lobel property, lots A1, A1, and A1, A2. Again, Mr. Quintmaw.
All right, I believe this was the one that had the two comments, because it was a lot to A1, A2 was required for the wanting of the front setback, which is, which is not an issue for us. We can go ahead and put that on A1, A2. And as well as, they wanted the sign for the users of the servitude. We actually have the pre-dial, we didn't include it, but we have it here. It's going to be finished, so contingent upon getting a notary to notarize the pre-dial servitude agreement.
So the drawing then has been revised? I mean, do y'all have-
We have, we have not seen it yet, but-
No.
He'll submit a revised drawing, I'm sure.
So that's got to be submitted before it can be signed and approved, then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the same thing with the pre-dial servitude?
Yes.
That would be notarized and entered into the record? Commissioners, have any questions on this? Let's open up the public hearing. Stacy, do we have any? No cards, okay. We'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion at this time.
I recommend approval contingent upon the comments from the staff being addressed.
Comments being addressed. Okay, Mr. Chivisi moves.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nizo. Any objections? That motion stands approved. Okay, that'll bring us to nine G, Augustina v. Bruce Estate, lots Z1 through Z5. Mr. Quintmaw?
Yes, asking for approval for the estate of Augustina Bruce. All comments have been addressed.
Okay, it's good. We'll see one for you that doesn't have contingencies this time. Any questions or comments from staff, I mean, from commissioners?
Well, there's still a request for a variance on the T-turnaround.
The T-turnaround.
I didn't want to go completely without answering something.
And the reason for that request?
Is identical to the other one.
Okay.
We have Z1 as, you know, 10.96 acres, and obviously, we can extend that further down, and there is some property across the ditch.
All right, then let's then open a public hearing on this. Any cards? Okay, no cards, so we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion on this one.
Move for approval.
Mr. Calendar moves.
Second.
Second, and this is approval with the variance on the T-turnaround?
That is correct.
Okay. And second by Mr. Burgess. Any objections? That motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
All right, that finishes up nine, and then we go to item number 10, 10A. It's a public hearing to approve or deny the following revision to the preliminary plat. Renaissance First, Second, and Third filings, Tatum Engineering Consultants. Would you identify yourself, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Ladies, Mr. Chairman, Commission members, I'm Jim Tatum. I'm with Tatum Engineering, representing All-Star Land here tonight. We worked on the original Renaissance subdivision that started back in 2005. It was originally three different filings, total of 137 lots. The first two filings have been built, and houses are currently being built in both of those filings. Last year, the St. John Church, adjacent to us and on the north side, approached the developers and needed some additional property for the expansion of the church grounds, primarily for some educational school facilities, and All-Star was able to work with them. They negotiated the price and sold a significant portion of what would have been the third filing. The little piece that was left over was large enough for six additional lots. And the revised preliminary plat that you have for you represents the first two filings, which are complete. The third filing has been reduced by about 20 lots, down to six.
Okay.
The original construction that we put together in the subdivision included all the infrastructure for drainage, sanitary sewer collection, and treatment. So in effect, we'll be, we'll be a little bit overkill in our, in our drainage now. And I know there were some concerns that we worked through with the neighbors on the south side, but there are two large detention ponds out there. Since we've gone in place, I don't think that the subdivision to the south has experienced any significant drainage issues, so in this instance, I think we've been a good neighbor. I'm not aware of any objections or concerns from any of the neighbors or any, any of the local agencies. I ask for your approval and support on this motion, and I'll be glad to answer any questions or address any comments. Thank you.
And we'll note that the staff has recommended approval. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, at this time, we will open up a public hearing on this issue. Do we have any cards? Okay, then we will close the public hearing. Any comments from staff on this? You've recommended approval, huh?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval.
Mr. Burgess moves that we approve.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ori. Any other questions, discussions? Any objections? Okay, the motion carries, and this is approved. Brings us to item 11, a public hearing to approve or deny the following final subdivision plat. This is Bullion Crossing PUD, second filing, Quality Engineering and Surveying.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members-
Would you identify yourself?
I'm Jared Berger from Quality Engineering and Surveying. I'm here to ask for approval of the final plat, Bullion Crossing, second filing.
Again, we will note that the staff has, all comments have been addressed, and the staff recommends approval. Any questions or discussion of the commissioners? Mr. Burgess?
What's the impact of the tree health? What happens if the trees continue to be unhealthy? Are you replaced?
So, the discussion that I've had with quality engineering has been such that the burden of maintaining that health falls on whom? The builder, in essence, is responsible for putting them in place, but based on the approved developers' agreement, the developer is responsible for ensuring the maintenance of those trees. And so what we did is, in our comment, is basically stated that the trees that have been placed that are unhealthy, that are in the first filing, when they come for the third filing, we're going to require that those trees be replaced. The second filing will note which trees aren't healthy, so when they come for the fourth filing, we'll be able to sort of catch those. And then when the fourth filing maintenance bond is expiring, that's when we'll catch the fourth filing tree. So we're giving them some time from the time that they plant them till the time that we come back and see that they're healthy or unhealthy. But based on the developers' agreement, it reads that landscaping shall be installed consistent with the approved landscaping plan and included with the final development plan package and maintained throughout the entire project construction. So when they come to us for their third filing, we're going to look at the first filing trees, and any of them that are dead, we will not approve their preliminary plat until those have been replaced.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll open up a public hearing. Any cards on this one, Stacy? Okay. All right, so we will close the public hearing, and the item before us is approve or deny the following, this subdivision plat, the Bullion Crossing PUD. I'll entertain a motion.
I recommend approval.
Mr. Ori moves to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calendar. Any objections? Motion carries, and the filing is approved. Item 12, the petitioner has, has asked that we pass on this, so we will, it'll be taken up at a later time. Item 13, public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council, amendments to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code. This is A, Ordinance SR 1308, to amend Section 17505 of the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code, grade requirements. And we have discussed this at a prior meeting, if I'm not mistaken. You want to enlighten us a little bit, Mr. Compton?
Or Mr. Ward?
This is, yeah, we did talk about this last month, and it's basically just removing the requirement to have a parking lot one foot below the flood elevation.
Right.
Basically, it's because FEMA doesn't, doesn't regulate that, and we're not really sure why that got put into the code.
Okay. All right. Any questions, comments from commissioners? All right, this does require a public hearing, so we'll open up a public hearing. Do we have cards on this? No cards, okay. So we can close the public hearing. Any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to recommend approval to the-
Mr. Nizo moves that we recommend this ordinance to the parish council.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calendar. Any objections? Motion carries, and we'll recommend this ordinance to the parish council. Item 14, staff report.
Stacy's going to hand out a couple of little sheets that I was working on over the last several weeks, and I haven't gotten very far. It's been crazy busy in the office. But what this is, is the subdivision regulation revisions that we've been chatting about over the last few months, and this is going to be in a final form next month. And what I'd like to do is request a public hearing so that we can start the ball rolling to moving this to the council. I don't think we'll get it done in one meeting because it is a lot of information, but this packet starts to lay out how the code will be revised to put those changes into the code. So we'll have one ordinance for the zoning tables, and we'll have one ordinance for the subdivision regulations and how they're going to be revised. And so what I did is, I went through the subdivision code, and I found the sections that were relevant to what we were talking about, and I made the amendments, which is what the existing and then proposed, to show you how that's going to change. And then on the second page, I've crafted a new section, which is 174020, called Major Subdivision Design Guidelines. And I'm going to take all of those items, those, the color-coded items that we went through, and I'm going to put them into sections and subsections. And then I'm going to take the existing sections of the code that we currently use when somebody submitted a major subdivision, and we're going to feed those into the code. So when somebody comes to us, they don't have to look through 30 sections to figure out how do they build a major subdivision. It'll simply be, here's the guidelines. And the first section of that, when is this section necessary? We're basically going to verbalize so that people aren't confused. This is not for simple divisions. This is not for family partitions. This is not for minor subdivisions, or PUDs, or SPUDs. This is not for minor subdivisions, or PUDs, or SPUDs, or TNDs. This is for major subdivisions only. So we're going to walk through the code, we're going to craft it into the, our sections, how we, our current land development code is, and then down at the bottom where it says existing and proposed, what I'm going to do is I'm going to eliminate or just wipe the text clear in those sections. They'll just be space holders for future growth of the code, but all of those sections will be incorporated in with these major subdivision design guidelines. And we'll have that in its final form, hopefully in the next week, so I can send it out to y'all, so y'all can start reviewing it prior to the public hearing next month.
Now, when we have a public hearing, would that be structured in such a way that this would be one agenda item for, in one public hearing, or would we break it into sections and have a dozen or so public hearings?
It's really up to you how you want to make it. It's going to be one ordinance. You can have one public hearing, and you can just talk about the different sections, and we can go from there. But it will be one ordinance.
I'm just wondering if, if a member of the public may have issue with several different items, and if they'd be limited to three minutes, that they wouldn't be allowed to speak on every issue that concerned them. On the other hand, we had a meeting last week, that, last month, that lasted until midnight, so don't want to invite too much of a lengthy thing. But at the same time, we don't want people to be shut out of the, a discussion if they, if they're doing this. So we may have to structure the public hearing a little bit different.
Yeah, and listen, I think it's going to be more of an open forum type of discussion. I think if somebody gets up and has three minutes, and then everybody else speaks, and one of their issues maybe wasn't addressed, you can allow them to come up. But if they're just going to repeat something somebody else said, that's...
Right.
Defeating the purpose. But I think having the open forum for this type of a, an ordinance revision is okay.
Okay. All right, well, we will, we will then, you know, if, if the, the commission agrees to have a, a public hearing, we'll have it maybe a little bit more loosely organized and allow people within that thing to address more than one item and give them an additional three minutes or so.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions in particular about this? Then we would need, if we wanted to have that, that public hearing next month, we'd have to, to move on that at this time. Yeah. Okay, well, this, this doesn't really allow for public hearing, but go ahead and identify yourself. You have a concern about this?
I have one question. No, I'll identify myself. I'm Doug Villian. I'm a private consultant, planning consultant. My question is, will there be advertisement on the items that will be discussed prior to the public hearing? Or will a report only be presented to the commission, and the public hearing be opened up on that, on those items presented at that moment?
I mean, our, our agenda is, is published in accordance with the law, and, and all the items will be on it. In terms of, of...
This, I'm talking, I'm referring to the specifics of, of, of the changes, of the regulation changes. Will they, will they be available to the public prior to the planning commission meeting?
Yes, everything we do at this meeting is published, when it's a public hearing, published on the internet at least one week prior to the meeting. If I can get this drafted in the next week or so, I'll go ahead and put a link on the planning website so that anybody who's interested can go and download it and see what it's all about. I've got no problem doing that.
And I think that'd be important to do, because it's some issues that people will want to know about and will want to possibly comment about, and we don't want to, to rush on this or, or push it through until everyone has had a chance to look at it and, and comment on it. So, yeah, if you could get that out on, on the website, that would be really good. Thank you for your comment.
No, he's been very grateful, I mean gracious at emailing me information relating to the report so far. And, but I just wanted a chance to review it before it's brought to the public hearing.
Right, okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and, and of course, this would be a public hearing, and it would maybe not even take action until the following month, and then if it did take action, it would go to the councils. There would be plenty, enough time for, for public input at a lot of different levels. Okay?
Ricky, how else do we go about advertising this? I mean, do we put this in the newspaper saying there's going to be a public hearing? And we can't really put a yellow sign up?
There will be, it will be on the agenda as a public hearing to discuss ordinance 17 blah blah blah, major subdivision guidelines. And then what we'll do is, it'll be on the planning website, and then one week prior, when we publish it to the web, that will be part of the package that goes out. When it goes to the council, they have to publish ordinances in full text, and so that will, at that point, be published in the paper.
And of course, our friends in the news media can also highlight that if they want to, to do that. I think if it, if it's an issue that they feel is that important to the public, it can be brought out through the press.
Sure.
Okay.
Throw grenades.
Very, very blurb-worthy.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to, to have a public hearing next, next month? Mr. Burgess moves. Mr. Callender seconds. Any objection? Okay, we will put that on the, on the agenda for, for next month. That concludes your staff report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, engineering staff report?
Yeah, just want to go over some of the projects we have going on. There's still four subdivisions that are in their bond period, and that'll bring 352 lots into the system when those are done. There are four subdivisions under construction. Three of those are almost complete. As you, as you know, two of them last month were approved contingent on finishing up the additional items of the engineering certification, posting their bond, et cetera. And one, that Bullion Crossing, which you heard tonight, is also almost done, and they just have a few small items to finish up. So when that is all done, that's 235 lots being brought in. Then there are, we have seven subdivisions which have been approved, and they're waiting for different reasons, for other filings to be finished before they start selling lots on the other, before they come in with the plans for the other subdivisions. And that'll bring in 399 lots. And then we have two subdivisions under review at this time, and that's, that'll bring in 114 lots. So there's a total of 1,100 lots altogether.
And do, I guess we anticipate quite a bit of building activity over the next year or so?
Probably, yeah.
Yes. Okay. All right, so that, does that conclude your report?
Yeah, well, and then also on the, the commercial sites, we just have, we have eight under review, and 59 are in different stages of being developed. We don't keep close contact on those. It's mostly private development, but there are a couple items that, you know, we just get involved with.
And of course, none of this includes anything within the city of Gonzales. That's a separate...
Mainly, we do review some, some of their drainage and all, because that's part of the, the parish system, but generally, the city of Gonzales is their own entity.
Okay. Any questions of commissioners, comments? Okay, then that concludes our agenda. A motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move by Mr. Second. Any objections? Okay, we will adjourn, and in five minutes, we will begin the zoning commission meeting. Meeting adjourned.